No one, all those who are able, please stand to see the pledge of allegiance.
I believe it is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It looks like one, two, three, four, five.
So you don't have Don, so you need you can seat one.
That's right. So we will seat Angel tonight. Alright. Hey, Marcus.
Angel was uh seated?
Yes. Alright, so we have two sets of minutes from the same night. Well, you know, Marcus.
Certainly, okay, first one, let's take a look at the uh minutes of our special meeting. Uh seven twenty-three. And of course, this was the site walk and subsequent conversation uh regarding the Tariffville neighborhood plan. Does anyone have any comments on page one, which there's only one?
Yeah, I didn't see anything. Well stated, well summarized.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of the special planning commission special meeting on Tuesday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four as submitted.
Second.
Um, all those in favor of accepting the minutes of the July twenty-third, twenty-four special meeting, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, turning to the regular meeting of the planning commission, Tuesday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Any comments on page one, which would be lines one through forty-six?
Oh, hey.
Any comments or questions on page two, lines forty-seven through eight.
Actually, uh I'm sorry, forty, line forty-five, is it Carolyn or Carolyn Clemens? Doesn't matter. I just heard the senior ward. Okay.
We'll check that name. What line was that? Say that line again.
It is, it's Carolyn.
It's Carolyn, right? That's what I thought. Just, I mean.
Carolyn.
So line forty-five. Sorry about that.
Good one, good catch.
Thank you.
Okay, page two. Lines forty-seven through eighty-eight.
I didn't see anything.
Alright, hearing no comments or uh questions, make a motion to accept the minutes of the planning commission regular meeting, Tuesday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four with the uh amendment on line forty-five to change the name from Carol to Carolyn.
Second that.
Alright, all those in favor of accepting the um regular minute meetings from regular meeting minutes from July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. There we go. Alright. So it looks like our first agenda item was with John George?
It was.
Okay. Can we expect to get that later or? Or no, we don't know?
Uh it's been withdrawn for now.
Okay.
So I mean, I obviously if it comes back um and it included a and if it includes a zoning text amendment, uh you will review it.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, so the second uh agenda item is a referral from zoning, application ZC twenty-four dash twenty of Lewis and George Esquire. It is to amend the town zoning regulations to allow for an agriculture and composting use in the industrial zones.
Yeah, ma'am chair, we have um Brittany put together a staff report for you uh describing the text amendment. Um the town is working with a a a farming entity to um to perform work and establish um some agricultural as well as um organic recycling at the town property on Walcott Road. Um the use is uh the uses ag operations, um ag sales, retail, you know, sales of vegetables, those kinds of things. And organics and recycling is not permitted today in the either I district, I one or I two. So the change was necessary in order to um accommodate that use. Uh the 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 farm entity has been working particularly with Department of Public Works to to kind of establish a use out on um out on that property. Uh so so Brittany put it together, by by and large, we think it's a we think it's a great idea. It's it's um it significantly uh adheres to the P O C D goals, particularly related to 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 um to sustainability and composting and recycling and those kinds of things. Um it's a it's a use probably need in in the zoning regulations today.
So that pertains to both sides of Walcott Road, sixty-eight and sixty-nine?
So it's gonna it's gonna, the the zoning is gonna, uh the text amendment is gonna apply to any industrial ground.
This application is for sixty-eight and sixty-nine. Okay, the application is for a text amendment?
It is it is for a text amendment, yes.
Okay.
Um I gotta go back and look at this and look at the site plan. It's the east side of road.
Sixty-eight and sixty-nine?
Well, it can't be, it can't be.
It's both sides, it's both sides.
I'm fairly certain the site the site plan is 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 heavily related to the east side.
Okay, so there's been some uh excavation going on there recently, is that part of this?
There has.
So that was a little.
There has. Um so so the application um will require a a site plan approval in front of.
So their work is stopped for now?
There's there has been some work out there, just some earth moving. Um I'm not I'm not sure that that that's a true violation, they can go out and move dirt, town can go out and move dirt out there today. Town, so um. So we will work with them to get them through the process. And that should happen in the coming months, once they get to public hearing, um which will, this is this is scheduled for public hearing um on the sixteenth of September. And then we expect a site plan to follow very quickly after that.
George, can you go back one slide, please? These are proposed additional uses.
That's right, proposed additional uses. Um ag is is not, is is a, the I districts today are silent on ag. And of course, um the organic recycling is a newer use, it probably wasn't even contemplated five years ago, so.
Okay, so adjacent to that property is the, you know, the town-owned transfer station. And.
Yes.
Some organic recycling occurs there.
Yes.
Is that, what zone is that?
I believe there's a um, I think there's discussion of of partnership related to those the current activities.
So is that currently a non-permitted use?
Well, it's town, it's pre-existing non-conforming, it's town-owned land, they probably, we've been doing it for some time.
Okay, there's another facility off of uh West Mountain Road, uh Fleming Farm Earth Products.
So composting is a permitted use, let me, yeah, let me let me let me put a finer point on that. Um what's different about this is 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 the organics, which is not included currently. It's a specific destination, it could include um more commercial composting, commercial food waste, those kinds of things. Which is not contemplated today. Composting is contemplated.
Yeah, no, I was trying to. Didn't they also wanna do some education too?
Not at this location.
Okay.
It's my knowledge.
I can't get that convenient.
So you got direct motion in front of you, um. Happy to answer any other questions.
The part of the de- one of the definitions, I think, includes some of the uh recycled organics to be employed on the 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 uh parcel where it's uh produced?
So I think the definition does cover that. I am, I mean, I town Department of Public Works is having ongoing discussions with the potential user about specific uses on site. Um we and and specific operations in specific locations that we expect the site plan to 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 kind of to handle.
Will this will this improve the economic viability of that property? Will there be any, you know, any proceeds?
So so there's a lease arrangement and I'm not uh I'm not privy to that to that agreement. I I don't, I I I'm, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
I don't know the answer. In fact, we did, you know, we we as planning staff didn't really look at it that way, we looked at it as, you know, are these uses, do these uses make sense in the in, you know?
Part of the P O C D is economic development, you know?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we would we 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 would put this also in that category, you know, allows Fleming Farm to 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 expand some operations, that's who the user is. And so they're they're gonna transfer some of their activities to this site. And it allows them to to be a little bit bigger.
Are they to retail now?
I would definitely emphasize that uh the recycling aspect is a major thrust for the sustainability committee. And in fact, we see that um helping uh the sensory school systems uh create a plan to recycle food waste would greatly reduce food waste in the town. And facilities like this are are key to that. For that reason, I would like to uh suggest that we um uh adopt the draft draft motion.
And the draft motion is on display for for all to see, so you can just reference that, you don't need to read the whole thing.
Okay.
It's also in our tablet, too, so I somehow got out of that.
Yes, thank you, George.
Oh, it's awesome, it's awesome, it's perfect. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So you made a motion, Holly?
Yep. Yes.
George says it's not necessary to read it.
Okay, so. Yeah, now I'll second that, we should get there.
Okay. Any discussion? Any other questions? No? Alright, all those in favor of the draft motion for ZZ twenty-four dash twenty, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously. So the next referral is from the Board of Selectmen. Eight dash twenty-four review for the sale and disposition of a um point three-six acre parcel located at the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Firetown Road and Owens Brook Boulevard. Thank you, George.
Now you, you, all those documents in there on that on your screen.
Yep, thank you.
If you can.
Okay.
Yeah, let me walk, let me walk you through it. Um so, this is a referral required under the state statute. The Board of Selectmen has referred to you the 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 potential sale and disposition of a point three-six acre parcel located at the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Firetown and Owens Brook. Um usually, if 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 you've seen the highlighted stuff, I usually highlight that for you in your staff memo. But again, I I just, I do have, I hope that it helps emphasize the reason for this particular referral. So it is required under the state statute. No municipal agency, the town in this case, uh shall sell any municipal-owned property until the proposal to take such such action has been referred to the commission for a report. So, this um, this referral is not related to anything indicated in the town charter or in the town code of ordinances. This is a requirement under the state code, and that's what's in front of you tonight. Um so it's point three-six acre uh small parcel acquired by the town. In my, in my description, is a leftover parcel during subdivision process, an older subdivision circa nineteen sixty. Um the, as you'll see from the picture, the 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 lot is uh irregular in shape and it's not readily buildable, in in staff's opinion. Um it is not dedicated by deed or legal restriction as open space. It's not part, as far as we can tell, not part of the approved required open space related to that subdivision. It is shown on the on the open space inventory, which was created by the Open Space Commission. And it is included in the P O C D um as an open space inventory. Um and the town has maintained the property um for 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 some time. So here here's the, here's the quadrant, um Firetown and Owens Brook. Um here's the map without the aerial, and you can kind of see um see the 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 subject parcel. This process began by the property owner who resides at two fifteen Firetown, contacted the town and asked whether the town would be interested in selling that leftover piece. So that's how the process got started. And here's just a couple of street views. This is looking south on Owens Brook. Looking west on Firestown. And at the at the intersection, again, looking kind of west and north there. So it's um it's largely grassed, um with the exception of one tree. Um so 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 your job, uh your job under the referral process here, on the eight twenty-four referral process, is that um you review and provide a report. Now, the eight twenty-four statute doesn't say what kind of report or or what your what your review criteria is. But usually, we assume that your review criteria is that you're reviewing for consistency with the plan of conservation and development. And as such, I I I throw some policies up there, relevant policies to your review. Um of course, we have a strong commitment to to the preservation of open space and the protection and enhancement of those kind of natural ecosystems, natural resources, those kinds of things. Um you you've got some 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 strategies where and goals where we talk about preserving important areas of open space, striving to create an open space system and and managing that open space system. We also have a community facilities policies where we talk about providing for and maintaining community facilities uh that sustain and enhance the community. Um and provide community facilities to meet community needs as effectively and efficiency efficiently as possible. And uh and also to address com- uh uh address community facility needs. The P O C D, the newly adopted P O C D has a specific action in the community facility section where it says that the town will evaluate the possible disposition of small town-owned property, uh small town-owned parcels which do not contribute to the overall town goals. So that's, it's kind of the P O C D background. Um staff has provided a report and a and a recommendation. Um staff finds that the the sale and disposition is consistent with town policy. Um and the action step to dispose of parcels that do not contribute to the town's overall goals. Our findings, the parcel is not connected to other open space. It is a leftover remnant of the subdivision. Uh and the sale, even though it's a small portion, a a small parcel, does place the property back on the tax rolls. Um of course, the commission may also find in the alternative that the property is valuable. And that the undeveloped land is is valuable open space and does in fact contribute to the town's overall goals. Happy to answer any questions.
George, you know, one of the questions I got asked uh that you had forwarded was uh regarding procedure and whether or not uh coming to the planning commission first was the correct procedural step, will you determine if that's correct or not?
Um sure, so so what you have been referred to is an eight twenty-four referral. Required under the state law.
Right.
That procedure is quite proper.
Okay.
And 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 appropriate and consistent with previous practice for this body.
Okay, I think that is.
I'm not go, I'm not going to opine on um the process that is laid out in the town charter or the town code that is for the 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 town manager and the town attorney and the Board of Selectmen to adjudicate. Uh your job is to review as an eight twenty-four referral this evening.
Sure. And this being point three-six acres, it's not something to your point, I think you said it's not buildable at this time? Or it's not, it would require additional site work?
So it's, uh you know, it's a buildable. It is, it is um, it has, it has proper fringe and has the, I think we're our our fifteen here.
So what is it? What is the minimum, uh point two-five?
So it's, so it's our our our, it's fifteen, forty, fifteen? It's it meets the minimum lot size. Um but placing a structure on the property is going to be very difficult to meet setbacks and it's going to require a number of variances. Um you know, one one condition, if if you're headed towards the affirmative, one condition to include, um that staff recommended in the staff report was if it is sold to an adjacent property or that, they'd be required to combine combine lot lines as part of um any 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 sale. And that that would remove it from any buildable status.
Yeah, I thought that was in there, that uh there's one.
It is, I I think it is.
Yeah, that that it wouldn't be built, right, no. So, it was in one of these.
It's in your staff report, so.
Yeah.
Yep.
That that it wouldn't be. They wouldn't build on it.
It's page two.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, that no additional home can be constructed, yeah.
Yeah, I I again, I would I would suggest you add that if you're.
A good condition.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody has a condition. Yeah, this is, you you are pri- you are.
It's not in the motion. We're not having comments?
You're providing a um, providing that recommendation to the to the to the Board of Selectmen and and they may have additional, you know, they have may have additional conditions or um or choose to reject your conditions.
Yep.
And the deal's up to them ultimately.
Right, this is a recommendation to the B O S, right?
So so this is a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen. I I'm just trying to, and then the Board of Selectmen will make the final decision on whether this this occurs.
Absolutely, it is, it is, it is left with them to to decide whether to sell the land or not.
Sure.
Your job is to make a finding whether whether the, whether that disposition is consisting with P O C D policy. It is a, it is a, it is a.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah.
So when we talk about open space, that is the only parcel in that general area, so it's a little kind of green sliver. Although, are there, have there been any conversations with the town to continue that east-west connection? Because we did talk in the P O C D about open space paths. And there is a great path that goes from Firetown to Hopnado. And I'm just wondering if there was conversation on connecting that to.
And and not not as, not not opportune to this, to to this particular sale, I mean, if you look at the um
Right, yeah.
you know, our bike and pedestrian plans, we, you know, we.
But that wouldn't prohibit that.
Those kinds of things are supported, it would, the sale would not prohibit it. In fact, you recommend the town, you know, place and condition that any easements, uh you know, any easements necessary to provide for pedestrian access.
Which would, they'd have to do anyways for the rest of the town.
They would, they would, but.
Okay.
Yes, I think so.
So it it is not contiguous with some larger uh parcels that that formed at Rain?
Thank you.
No.
It takes the magnifying glass, have you found it on the open?
I have.
Yeah.
It's. And I've lost it.
It's right there.
It's not. It's not next to anything, like you just see it, neighborhood, neighborhood, neighborhood.
Hmm.
Like, house block, house block, house block.
Although, there is an impressive amount of open space in the whole area.
Yeah, in the. Like forties behind it.
Hmm. As it is throughout the entire town, thank God.
What page is that, Holly?
Um it's page.
Forty-one.
The forty-one. It takes, it takes a bit of a sleuth to find the little microscopic God. Yeah, it's not.
During the uh drafting of the P O C D, we had quite a bit of conversation about uh contiguous natures of open space and usability of open spaces. Speaking for myself, um this is a good example of a small parcel, non-integrated with other open space parcels, that I believe we should send a positive referral back to the uh Board of Selectmen.
Well, I agree one hundred percent. What I think we talked about when we were filling the P O C D is the implementation part of it and the what next. And I believe that's what some of the memos that we got today. Anybody who is abiding open space today, can they just call George and say, hey, I wanna buy my that property? So I I think, I think this is the first, so I agree that's the right parcel, but what is the process by which or who would own that process to determine?
The town administration would own that process.
And determine, yeah, the sort of.
Yeah, in fact, I think the assigned, the assigned lead from that action step is is the town, that typically means town administration.
Yeah. So, I agree with you, though, that's why the P O C D is this first open space that's not connected.
And and I believe you would have suggested it, didn't you?
Could be.
I would regret that.
Well, to your point, that each parcel would have to be taken look at very individually, because we might be
Absolutely.
we might be faced with something that is contiguous and so on and so forth, so I I get what you're saying, but the process would be through the town and the town manager and then.
Through the town, when that happens, it would always come to us for a report, so that's that's fair.
Yep.
It'd be the same process again, right, to come to us for a report and to
It would.
Board of Selectmen for a final decision.
You have a direct motion in front of you revised from the staff report. Not through me, you can't, no.
Yeah, it's not, we, it's, we're, it's, we're not having public audience, um so we can't.
I have another question.
I, we're, I was told procedurally we can't, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Okay.
So Diane, you can take.
Ask after.
No, you can take your question to the Board of Selectmen, for sure.
For sure, I will. Thank you for that clarification.
We don't get to write the rules. I feel bad, too, because we know a lot of you guys.
It's just something you said, I think it's incorrect.
I don't believe I said anything correct.
We're not gonna have a discussion, I think I've been very clear, we're not taking public questions or comments, it's not procedurally correct, so. So um we have before us potentially making a motion.
So I'll I'll make the motion. Move, the planning commission finds that the sale and disposition of the subject property, a point three-six acre parcel, tax map F zero seven, one zero seven, zero six two, located at the northwest quadrant of the intersection of Firetown Road and Owens Brook Boulevard is consistent with the adopted plan of conservation and development uh and its overall goals. Additionally, uh conditions should be considered that the purchaser of the property combined the subject parcel through recorded deed and lot line revision with the master parcel to ensure no additional home can be constructed. And no further subdivision can be applied for.
Do we have this?
Otherwise, the purchaser should be permitted all the rights associated with the ownership.
So a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion as just stated by Mr. Rice, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so Tariffville Tariffville Neighborhood Plan is um, it's moving right along. Uh I think we're in a very good, a very good place now, that survey is live. And through uh through through Friday, we had a hundred and twenty-nine responses. But I would tell you, this is we we, Brittany and I went to Brittany and I attended the Tariffville Neighborhood Association community meeting, we were invited, and we kind of walked them through the process. Really, we did the same presentation we did in front of you back in uh during that July twenty-third site walk, but we are going to send uh the ser- we're gonna send a survey flyer with the um with the Q R code to every resident in Tariffville, so we we uh or every household that we have an address for, so we, today we sent about six hundred and fifty
Mm-hmm.
uh letters out, um but that's great, because that's what we want, we want their input.
Right.
Um and we tried.
Is it on the town website?
It is on the town website, yeah, absolutely, it's on the front page.
It is, that's what I found, yeah. Yep.
Front page. Along with the uh the story map and um and that kind of info. Along with the uh, the story map and um, and that kind of information, so. Uh and we had a good, you know, we had a good, a very good meeting, um. That little, that little church room was kind of, was crowded. We got a lot of questions, Brittany and I, we tried to answer them to the best of our ability. Public workshop and open house will be nine twenty six. I think I, hopefully we've said that to you before. I'm sure we have, but just as a reminder.
So that's our regularly scheduled meeting?
No, it is not. It is not. It is not. It's a Thursday. That's the day we could get the school. That's the.
But it's a Thursday, right?
Oh, okay, so I'm not around, yeah.
So. So what, what meeting is that, George?
So that's going to be the community open house.
Community open house, okay.
For the Tariffville Neighborhood Association. And that will be, you know, similar to your, your, uh, your P O C D open houses that you had, who will have some community activities and some, you know, dot prioritization and, you know, kind of interactive ta- ta- table work, those kinds of things. Uh, 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 undetermined, five to eight, four to seven.
Gotcha.
Six to nine.
You're right, I'm not of town, I'm in New York, so I won't, I don't.
Haven't, yeah. So we haven't? Yeah.
And the location?
It's gonna be at Tariffville School.
Tariffville.
That's good, so it'll be.
Absolutely, yeah, and that's, that's, can't do it without being at that school.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the whole point.
Yeah.
For sure, so we're excited about that.
Okay.
That process is, is in good shape.
Yeah, they've been really involved. It's really nice to.
Yes, that's been, it's been, it's quite a pleasure, actually.
Yeah, it really has been. It's awesome. Alright.
That's all.
Thanks for letting us.
That's all stand by.
Thanks for the heads up.
Alright.
So I got.
Yeah, I know, I'm not in town, but that's, it'll be in good time. Yeah, thank you. Any other questions for George, anything? Alright, alright, then uh without objection, I will um adjourn the meeting at seven thirty three. Thank you, everybody.